Join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Claudia here. Tracy Ellen. Barbara here. Alan.
Here.
Annette.
Here.
Stephanie.
Yeah.
John.
Here.
Doug. Al.
Here.
Elizabeth. Anna.
Here.
Joy. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place there sent to the record in the Star Ledger newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district principals' offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, "The smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100."
The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to promote a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and in ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standard.
We move into public comments on agenda items only. There will be a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments and anything else related to Riverdale Regional School District. And I see we have an empty audience here tonight, so we'll just kind of move on to -- we do have a presentation tonight. Mr. Vito DeLora, the testing report from 2022. Vito, the floor is yours.
So I just want to warn you all, Vito has 147 slides that he wants to go through with each of you in painstaking detail tonight. So we should be finished with the presentation around 9:30.
Tomorrow.
It's tomorrow, very tomorrow. Hi, everybody. Good evening. It's my pleasure to bring you your annual report for testing here at Riverdale Regional School District. We're going to break it up into all in one, so this is all-encompassing data. I have -- I know Mr. Fletcher last year did four or five separate reports just based on the time that they came in, but this is going to be all of our reporting for the year, our DLM, our ELLs, our NJGPA, Start Strong. All of your data will be here. I tried. So what we need to report is we had a 98.3 participation rate of participation in 2122 for the NJSLA. I'm going to try to explain just a little bit of the setup. First setup is the numerical data, and it'll go ELA. There'll be a graphic representation of the data as well, which is a little easier to take a look at. These are our spring 2021, '22 ELA Language Arts scores. And then on the bottom of this graph represents the state average, and then at the top is Riverdale, our district average for those. So you can see it's reported out in grade seven, eight, nine, and then all grades is the final graph that represents. So for those of you not familiar, I'll just go over the way we look at these. Green is exceeding, light green is meeting expectations, yellow is approaching, orange is partially meeting, and red is always not meeting. I'm not sure why they choose that color, but that's what they use here for representation. These are our '21, '22 math scores. Grade seven, grade eight, middle school algebra, algebra in high school, and then geometry. And when I go to the next slide, I just want to note, actually it's the next slide, I'll show you a trend there. So you can take a look at our math scores. Again, same scoring as before. And the bottom is the state average, the top is the district average.
In geometry, we're missing two colors. Nobody was in those.
0% not meeting and 0% approaching. Not cut off, I checked. Here are our science scores for 2021, grades eight and grades 11. Again, you can see the levels. And then our graph compared to the state average. You can kind of see from these really quickly that, you know, Riverdale outpaced the state by quite a bit in most of these, especially at the top end, not in the bottom end when we're talking about not meeting expectations, but when we're talking about exceeding or advanced proficiencies. Riverdale outpaced all of the state averages.
Do we have data for the district factor that we're in?
We no longer have district factor group data. They don't provide us with that.
Do we know why they don't do that anymore?
I think the state just doesn't use district factor as identifier any longer.
They phased out their second level of data analysis with the DFJ.
It doesn't sound right because that provided us a much better comparison to our district than the state. I mean, I hope we're not surprised that we're exceeding the state.
Right. Oh, no, no, we're not. But they phased that out a couple of years ago, the DFJ.
Is there a way for us to do that anyway, or it's just not provided?
I mean, I could scour once all the reports are online and can take a look at old district factor groups.
Just to see if there's any room for improvement in any specific area compared to other similar districts.
Was there 2021?
No.
No, there wasn't. I couldn't.
No.
Actually, we'll talk about longitudinal stuff in a minute, a little later in the presentation.
And then also, we do need to report out on our demographic data, which is our groups. This is our data subgroup by race. You can see here is, again, the graphic representation, ELA, our subgroup by race mathematics. Just in a side, we do not report out any groups smaller than 10 due to confidentiality and FERPA, so we do not report out any groups that are less than 10. You can see that on some of the data slides. There's our math subgroup by race. Science subgroup race. Science graph. I'm going to go through these kind of quick because there's a lot of them that we have to report out on. This is our subgroup on gender, Fort ELA, gender ELA graph. Gender math. Gender math graph.
Girls are smarter.
Gender science. Gender science graph. This is by program, so that includes ELL, special education, general education, 504s. This is ELA by subgroup program. Math by subgroup program. These will be available on the web if you want to take a look at them closer. Science subgroup programming. And this is some of the longitudinal data that you asked. It's not specific to the I district factor group, but it is specific to Riverdale. So if we take a look at this and remember, we skipped a year, right? So we have data that goes across longitudinally, but it is separated by this pause in the data that we collected. It's a little easier to see this here for ELA across the years. This is from 2015. 16 is your first graph, and that goes 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19. Pandemic, no data, and then '21, '22. You can see significant, which I think is really promising here, that our data, while a little smaller, is statistically just a few students. So our students did relatively really well pre-pandemic numbers for 18 and 19. So that's really promising for students meeting and exceeding expectations on our ELA program.
Right, so if I could just jump for a second here. So you can see that there, if you recall, when we went out for March of 20 is when the school closed, and they finally canceled the administration of the NJSLA. Then for the 2021 school year, they canceled as well. So there's a two-year gap in the data that's coming in. However, as Vito said, and I want to emphasize this again, you'll see a slightly different situation when we turn to math. What, if you recall, we had three different rounds of federal funding. You had ESAR I, ESAR II, and now ARC. And during that same time, the State Department of Education changed their definition of what they call acceleration, right? So in our traditional thinking, acceleration was like if a student was, you know, outpaced their eighth-grade placement, you would put them in their ninth-grade placement for math or whatever else it was. But now acceleration is a very broad term that also looks at closing what they call the learning gaps that were created by COVID. What this is demonstrating is that, at least in ELA, English Language Arts, very minimal learning gap here at Riverdale. So that, to me, means a couple of things. One, our students were resilient and learned to work their way through the process that was there. But secondly, despite the fits and starts, our staff did a pretty good job of being able to provide instruction during that unsettled time. You'll see a little different piece in math, and then there's a bigger discussion that we'll talk about in a second.
Here's the numerical data. You can take a look at increases and decreases in this for meeting and exceeding and not meeting. And then this is our larger data piece with numerical representation. And then this is our graph. So looking at the graph, I did want to mention before, the geometry is a little skewed. That's a really great number, 100%. I did reach out to Ms. Ali when I saw that, and she mentioned that they only tested high school geometry, the one class, not the other. So it was due to the way that they set up the testing last year. Going back, though, grade eight, there was a significant gap there from students meeting or exceeding, and then also our Algebra I high school students. But if you look at the overall and all grades, you can see that the data is not as -- it's pretty equal from where we were pre-pandemic.
But our grade eight, they missed.
They did miss a lot.
They missed more than anybody really did.
So it makes sense when you look at this.
Right.
And Mr. Fletcher and I were talking, you know, we're thinking about how this lends itself to teaching and just in general, mathematics online and how that sort of translated. So we do have some programming plans to help those students.
Which we'll describe in a second. Go ahead.
Even if you're looking, you know, grade eight is going to dovetail into that Algebra I high school. And if you look at the trend was not going in a positive direction to begin with. Pre-pandemic. You see what I'm talking about?
In Algebra I.
In Algebra I, right. It was going down, right?
Yeah.
And so after two, what looked like, stable years. So you're now getting a group that maybe is under foundational into a course that maybe was already having foundational issues. So that might be something to think about overall.
Yeah, you'll see some of the, what we're going to talk about in a second. But again, what you see here is in three of the larger areas that we have, we did pretty well moving from pandemic to post-pandemic. The grade eight, which is the kids, remember, this is the kids who are current ninth graders. They were grade eight last year. And Algebra high school only are current sophomores. They were ninth graders for the most part last time. So those are the two hardest-hit classes, in my opinion, of COVID, particularly the grade eight, because they missed the entire opportunity to have a middle school experience. They didn't have anything at all related to it. And I think this also points to, it is somewhat more difficult to teach math on a computer. I don't know if our student liaisons would say that or represent it, but it's very hard to type math, right? You really need to kind of write it out. So it doesn't surprise me that there was a little bit more of a challenge for math instruction in the virtual world than now.
Can I ask you a question about science and the gender sign? I know it's back 14 slides already, but so grade eight, everybody's taking science. I think it's lumped in eight and 11 together, or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, they're reported separately, but both of those grades.
But when you were talking about gender, you lumped them in together, right?
All the grades, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. They're separated here.
Could you?
Grade eight, grade 11.
Right. Could there be an extrapolation of what I'm thinking, what I'm interested in from the 11th grade perspective is are they performing the same by gender based on how many students are subscribing in that gender? Does that make sense? In grade eight, everybody's subscribing, so that's one thing to look at as well. But the performance in each of those grades based on the number of students.
The total numbers.
The gender of the students. So if there's, you know, if there's, if there's less females in either grade, obviously, and they're, you know, performing at an equal rate, forget what the overall number looks like as opposed to if they're performing differently.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, the raw data here says there's 132. There's 132 of each, sorry, 132 females, 122 males, and the females, 52% were tested, 48% tested. And then the percentages for females were 33 proficient and 12% advanced proficient. So what does that leave us at?
Right, and then the male, there's less students and there's.
Less students and I can take a look at.
Yeah, so I'd be curious why that was happening.
Okay, we took a look at these. We took a look at the math. This is our access for ALs data. Here, our data is really non-reportable because we have subgroups less than 10, so we don't report out specifically on those.
Right, so there's going to be about 10 slides here in a row that have zero.
Subgroups.
Subgroups, but we are still required to report it, and it's especially important in a QSEC year because they actually go through your presentation to see that you did what they asked you to do, even though it doesn't apply to you.
And then again, reporting out with subgroups race for access for ALs, gender. And then we have our DLM, which also on our subgroups are less than 10 for these tests.
Dynamic Learning Map is an exam that's primarily provided for learners with an impairment in some way, shape, or form. Some of it's nonverbal, so there's a whole, it's a very, very small group of students that qualify to take this.
Okay, and then we're looking at AP data here. And you can see our data scores here. These are scores, percent scores, three and above for the last few years. Actually went up from 82 last year, 2021, to 88% in '21, '22. And then our NJGPA scores. It's a little harder to see. You can see here, this is the state on the left and then Riverdale on the right. And the red would be students who would have to attempt to retake that exam or take an alternative assessment, alternate assessment. And you can see the states almost like the reverse of our graph.
So the student liaisons, you took this exam. This was the exam you took last spring for the, which then the state this year said, "We're not going to use it for, as a graduation measure. You still are operating under what they call the matrix. They can satisfy graduation testing requirement in a variety of different ways." However, they still said you can report it, even though they said, "It's going to count." No, it's not going to count, but you still got to report it.
I mean, if you take a look at these slides, you can definitely see the, I mean, in my opinion, the state has some work to do on these exams and what their expectation is. Here's our math one. Again, left is the state, right is Riverdale. And then our most recent exam, Start Strong. One of the benefits of Start Strong is the data's accessible immediately, so we can take a look at that data. Here's our middle school Start Strong data. Our ELA seven, ELA math. ELA eight, I'm sorry, math seven, math eight. Red is strong support needed, yellow is some support needed, and green is less support needed. And the high school data, again, red is strong support, some support, less support. And it goes across ELA nine, 10, Algebra I, geometry two, science nine, science 12. So how are we going to support our students with this data? We do have some interventions at the high school and the middle school. We'll be meeting with students who are identified. We have some supplemental instructional programs based on the data. We are working on a Saturday Learning Academy for students. We have an enrichment program for ninth grade students coming up. We have homework clubs in the middle school and the high school. One of the things that we just completed was our first benchmark assessments with Linkit, and I look at that data and then send that out to our math teachers to take a look at those foundational skills that we can maybe supplement in class this year and really identify. This is our first time, well, I know we did a pilot, but first time using Linkit, so we're wrapping that up this week, and that data will be available for students. We use iXL and Lexia. This summer, we have a seventh grade transitional program, mentoring program, and then, of course, we care about wellness, and we use Wellness Survey and Youth Truth Survey for our students to check in with them as well. That is all of the testing.
Okay, so before you go, if you could just jump back on slide. Two slides, I apologize. Yeah, any one of those things. So what Start Strong did was, last year when we administered it, it was the gap to fill between the fact that you didn't have those two years of regular NJSLA testing. It was really supposed to be designed as a one-year thing to help us comply with the federal requirement for graduation testing. This year, the state decided that they would go forward with it, even though most of the education associations lined up against it and tried to have them move away. However, what I, the benefit that I see to this exam is the fact that it is A, condensed. It's very, very short. I think it's, you can accomplish all of the testing in one period. So you can do math in one period. You don't have multiple days of testing. Science in one period, et cetera, et cetera. But the data comes back extremely fast, which is what doesn't happen with the grand ELA testing or NJSLA testing in the spring. So for those students in the red, we can identify who they are because we got individual reports, which will be going home over the next couple of weeks. We can identify who those kids are. We can say, "Mrs. O'Neill, you need to go into a remedial class or you need to have some type of programming that'll go along with it, and we hope that you're going to allow your daughter or son to be part of that." The second piece that it would do is allow us to look at where the cluster of students were having issues. So as an example, in math eight, I'm just using this as an example. If you look at the questions that got wrong, and they're all clustered in what's called number cents as an example, we can then impact the methodology that's going on in the classroom, and we can impact the curriculum to determine maybe we're not covering that enough. And it comes so to us early in the school year, which gives us the opportunity to do it very, very quickly. So I think that there's some benefits to this. Where, again, I think the state could have gotten better with this is if they had this then linked to the performance on the NJSLA at the end, you could have had a pre- and post-exam, so to speak, and perhaps shown growth. But it's not quite linked to that way, and as Vito said, there's some work that they need to do, certainly on the graduation test, but I think on all of this stuff. Because it would eliminate, if it was linked and you could use it to show growth, it would eliminate certain other requirements that we would have to impact the instructional time of the students.
So Vito, you showed all those interventions that can go on. When students are identified as needing support, do we do any sort of evaluation on what would be the most impactful support? Because iXL is, iXL, let's just go, let's just go with that. And so like, you know, saying that everybody who fell into this pocket is going to get iXL isn't necessarily, like, some might benefit from the math club coming, like, so do we do an assessment for each student on that path?
So one of the nice things, yes, I think that's, Pat mentioned that as well, taking a look at those clusters. Also, when you look at the benchmarks that we just recently did, we're going to take those compared with the Start Strong data and look for commonalities between those two assessments. So let's just say, for example, a student was having trouble with number cents, as Pat mentioned. We're going to target that with that specific student. So each student will be, anybody who needs it, will be identified with those specific skills for that student.
But you're talking about the skills. I'm talking about what kind of intervention you do to perform, to enhance the skill. Like, instead of just saying, okay, everybody.
Right, like, what's the best tool for that skill?
And it's a cooperative journey, too. You don't, we would be meeting with the parents to say, "Here are options that we have available. Our recommendation, I'm making this up, is for you to, you know, come out of phys ed once a week and go to the interventionist that we have who would like coach you along the way." But if a family doesn't agree to that, and in the sense of a high school student, if they're 18 years old, they don't, they're the ones who have to make the decision. Even though we do have a vast array of things, they may not take advantage of all of them. But the answer is, you look at what the student needs and then match it to their, to the intervention that's available.
Okay, so it's not, so my.
Yes, so it would be.
My question is, there are tools to discover what kind of learner you are. Are we using any of those tools before we decide what kind of things we're offering? That's what I'm asking. Do we, do we do any assessment as to what kind of learner that individual student is before we say, "Here are your choices"?
Well, so, yeah, the answer is yes. We use the same intervention strategies that we would use for response to intervention, RTI, or 504, or going up to an IEP. It's a collaborative process that involves the teachers, it involves the counselors, it involves the family to lay out what the options are available. And during that time, we, there's this collaborative understanding of what's going, what are they going to respond to? what are they going to respond to? What, what kind of learner are they? What are they going to respond to? Because if a student is not going to respond to iXL, even though it's available to every student, that doesn't become the measure of their usage.
So the Saturday Learning Academy?
Saturday Learning Academy, sorry.
Oh, my God.
I couldn't do another slide, one for everyone.
No, 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 that's okay. Do we really anticipate people coming into a Saturday, like, no offense, I think they're tapped out by like Tuesday. Like, you guys are tired. And so like practice, like, I, I just, I, I find that to be a bizarre thing for us to put out there.
So in answer to your question, will students flock to that? I don't think so, quite frankly. However, what is a requirement under the ARP and under ESAR is that you provide opportunities for students to have interventions outside the four corners of the school day. So you, we have to offer them. If people don't take advantage of them, they don't take advantage of them. And it's kind of modeled on the program that we've been doing over the last couple of years, where we identify these students, we match them to a teacher, and then the teacher has to see the students a couple of times a week after school. So, you know, that's all part of that whole thinking. So do I think that's going to flock? No, but do we have to explore it? Yes.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, so then this will be posted to our website tomorrow. And we can send it to you if you want to have it as an individual doc to take a look at. And this will be evaluated during CUSAC.
Thank you, Vito.
March.
Okay, we'll jump right into the student member report. And tonight, we do have Lizzie and Anna joining Joy. And I do want to just thank you both for helping prepare Joy's report in your absence. I think Mr. Pepe had said that you did collaborate and help Joy form the reports in your absence. So I don't know who wants to start off, but please do.
So these past two weeks have been very busy at the high school. We had a lot of exciting events going on. The beginning of October marked the start of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so each sports team has been wearing a pink item in its honor this month. I want to congratulate seniors Jade and Sirmak Hussein, Sue Hyun, Steve Lee, and Lee Chan Hong for earning the National Merit Scholarship semifinalist status. And I want to say best of luck to them in the final stage. The senior class had an ice cream truck visit on October 6th. Thank you to Mrs. Cantanas for organizing this fun event for us. Many students participated and volunteered in the activities at the Oradell Fun Run on October 8th and River Edge Day on October 9th. SGO elections were held last week. Congratulations to our new SGO president, Miranda Peralta, vice president Danielle Angenito, and class representatives Caroline Vermaester, Gabriel Gallo, and Yunji Anali. The debate team attended their first debate tournament in Fairlawn on Friday. It was the first in-person debate held in over two years. Riverdale cheer hosted the junior cheerleaders at the football game on Friday. Thank you to the coaches and the cheerleaders for providing this experience to them. And Hon Capella performed the national anthem at the football game as well. It was a great way to showcase our talented music department. And finally, the interact club helped out at the Alzheimer's Walk this past weekend and presented a $300 check to Alzheimer's research.
And now on to the middle school. Field Day held October 7th was an absolute success. The seventh grade students had fun and took advantage of the opportunity to work together and build new relationships with classmates. A special thanks to staff and the amazing eighth grade student ambassadors who worked so hard to put everything together under the guidance of physical education teacher, Adam Facendola. The middle school acknowledged a week of respect October 3rd through the 7th. Students and staff had a chance to participate, wearing different theme colors each day to emphasize kindness and respect towards oneself, others, and the environment. RD 101 classes will spend the month of October presenting lessons that deal with such topics as kindness, respect, and empathy, and students will have the chance to participate in building wide activities that support these messages. One example is the annual show of hands activity that will take place this week, where all students in the grade seven will have the chance to proudly display a handprint and the different countries of origin of which their family members and ancestors have roots. The Out of Community Darkness Walk for Suicide Awareness was held October 16th in Saddle River Park. The stigma free club led by Ms. Kason, Mr. Stingo, and RD 101 raised $1,700 through a bake sale and participation in the walk for suicide awareness and prevention. Thank you to all the students who showed up and showed their support, as well as to Mr. Stingo, Ms. Kason, and Ms. O'Connor, who represented the Riverdale Middle School staff. Riverdale Middle School is excited to welcome the River Edge Police Department the next couple of weeks to spearhead the lead program. All eighth grade students will participate in the law enforcement against drugs and violence. Programmed through their physical education class, we look forward to continuing with our strong relationship with the local police.
Moving on, we have updates with our fall sports. To start, football will be playing premise this Friday in the Battle of Midland Avenue. It will be a Halloween out for the student section. Voice soccer beat Indian Hills and Fort Lee last week to improve to 8-3-1 on the season. They play tomorrow against Pascal Hills. Girls soccer beat Indian Hills and Fort Lee as well last week to improve to 11-3 on the season. They are ranked number eight in the record. Field hockey defeated Passaic Valley last week and played today against Oltepan. Girls tennis held their senior night on Wednesday, October 12th. They won 5-0 against Ramsey. The girls cross-country team finished third place at the Bergen County Championships on Saturday at Darlington and qualified for the Bergen Meetup Champions this coming Saturday. Congratulations to Christina Allen, who took first place in the Group B race and overall in the county, and to Rachel Mills, who took sixth in Group B and placed 13th in the county. Volleyball beat Fairlawn on Saturday to advance to the semifinals of the counties. This team is 16-1 on the season, ranked number four in the record and number nine in New Jersey. They play today against Mawa. Lastly, we'd like to congratulate Robert Yampowski, a senior at Riverdale, for placing second in the JGP Baltic Cup in Poland last week. Some upcoming events include freshman field day, which is scheduled for this Wednesday, October 19th. We hope the freshman class will have fun competing in various team bonding activities. Lastly, the junior and senior Halloween trip to the Eastern State Penitentiary will be this Wednesday as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I do also want to mention, since it's the first meeting for, to you ladies, that if there's ever any time during a meeting that something piques your interest and you want to speak up about anything, please do. We look forward to your reports, but any involvement in any other issue would be welcome. Okay? My report tonight is short. I know the board was sent an invitation for this Thursday morning, coming up for the Hawks Cafe, the VIP opening, and that would be right here in the media center at 8 o'clock. The Hawks Cafe, a coffee and hot beverage cafe created and operated by the transition team. So I know I'm going, and a few others have already responded to Debbie Emery that we will be attending. And then later on that night, Thursday night, Ford, Friends of Riverdale, will be having their Hall of Fame dinner at the Hackensack Golf Club, which is always a very nice night. This year, it's the Hall of Fame for athletes, and I believe next year, it's the distinguished graduates. They alter each year, they jump to a different celebration. So that's all I have today, so I'll pass along to Patrick.
Okay, so I've taken Hawks Cafe off the list. I'm going to take, I'm going to repeat a couple of things that our liaisons had mentioned, because I wanted to let you know that our interact club, which is a service club that's affiliated with the Rotary in both River Edge and Oradel, has been extremely active in a variety of different things. They were part of the food drive for local pantries and the Ukraine and the, for food to go to Ukraine and for the St. Joseph's Care Center. They did that as their fundraising during the football games. As was mentioned, the Alzheimer's Walk, where they were able to donate $300 to that. Then we also had, our students were participating in Oradel, the Oradel Day, the 5K, that, that our principal was the honorary starter.
They run.
They also participated with the Oradel Beautification Committee as a part of setting up, if you look around the street lamps, you'll see the corn husks that are up around there. They, our students participated in that. And they also unloaded 2,500 pumpkins on the corner of Continental Avenue and Kinder Kamak, where the pumpkin patches, okay? I drove by and la, and la, no, I drove by and waved at them all. They were all having a good time at it. So we have a really wonderful person that, or two people that really run that club, that's Ogil Sagalcock and Allison Fontaine. They're excellent people who, who instill and bring out a lot of stuff with the, with the students. We are hosting, it's going out shortly, a program called Disconnected. It's going to be up here at the auditorium on November 16th. It's going to be offered by, in conjunction with the PTO, but it talks about technology use and mental health, how much screen time is too much, strategies to help your child reduce anxiety, et cetera. It's presented by Tom Kirsting, so we're looking forward to that. There'll be more information as it comes out, but it'll be 7 o'clock on November 16th. That's up here. On our agenda tonight, under Curriculum 11A, please note that the ski club is going, they're changing the destination from Gore Mountain to Smuggler's Notch, which is in Vermont. And finally, I'd like to congratulate our own Lizzie Puentez, who was the Defensive Player of the Week in soccer last year, or last week. I think they had that down on that piece of paper, but they all refused to, to sing the praise. But congratulations on that milestone. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll run through, through the reports. I know most didn't meet, but budget and finance, Alan? No meeting. Facilities and security is Doug. Doug did have a work conflict tonight. He did tell us he wouldn't make the meeting, but I just wanted to thank Brian Pepe. Prior to our meeting tonight, he did give us the board and the student reps a run-through of the high school building on some of the updates that were made over the summer to make this building a more secure environment for the staff and students. So thank you, Brian, for that walkthrough. We'll jump into, well, Tracy Allen, Community Relations and Technology. Tracy Allen's not here tonight. There was no meeting, so we'll jump into curriculum with Stephanie, and I know we did have a meeting.
We did have a meeting at 6 o'clock this evening with Vito, and it was a rousing meeting, as every curriculum meeting is. And we talked about the scheduling for this year, what, what classes ran, what classes didn't run. We talked about potential future plans for the program of studies and how we continually kind of tweak that. There, there are different pathways and attitudes towards that, and so stay tuned for, for our December report, because that should be quite interesting. CUSAC, all roads lead to CUSAC, so there was a little update on, on that. In addition to the testing report, there will now be posted on the website, the testing schedule for the whole year. So if you wanted to plan out your calendar over the standardized testing, you, you will have that ability. And we discussed, that's, that's essentially it. So we meet again in December, which is usually the time that we are presented any new changes to the program of studies and kind of finalize things. We also, as a committee, as we talked about, we approved the curriculum, but there were still tweaks to, we, we couldn't, we couldn't review it all in, in the real time that it needed. And so we're going to do the December date as a deadline, and then as we reapprove at reorg the curriculum, it'll be with any tweaks, changes, typos, any of those kinds of things will be in that. That's it.
Thank you. Last would be policy and governance. Claudia?
So we didn't have a meeting, but we do have policy, the 5,000 series harassment, intimidation, and bullying. This is the second reading tonight? What? I said I never went there. Oh, okay. But it's, it's on for second reading tonight.
Yes, it is.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion in a second.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns about anything on the consent agenda? Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes, except for Q's from 9A.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes, but I'm going to abstain on 10E1.
Al?
Yes. We'll move on to the first vote off of consent. Under 12 miscellaneous, A, is recommended by the superintendent that the board approves second reading of the following policies, 5,000 series, 5131.2 harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Since this is the second reading, this is open to public comment. If need be, it was also open to public comments on agenda items earlier. But I do not, I'll make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Claudia? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Stephanie. And still, if there's any comment public, it's open to public? Okay. Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Al?
Yes. The second vote is under 13, Finance and District Operation, letter D. The superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending September 2022. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Alan, have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Stephanie?
Yep.
Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Al?
Yes. That brings us to news business, old business. Anybody? Stephanie?
So the presentation disconnected that Patrick mentioned, I have heard him speak and seen his presentation, and I think I've even read his book. And it's, it's a really good presentation. I encourage, I encourage those out there. I encourage people to come and see it, and it's a nice compliment, especially for anybody who had just come to the previous presentation, to see maybe some practical things that you could do to curb and disconnect a little bit. And maybe we could look at how we, as a district, could find sometimes to disconnect. But, and I don't know how people are going to sign out to go into the hallway. We might have to have just an old-fashioned past day. But, but looking at ways where we could disconnect a little bit for our student body.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I was at the football game where we were here at home two games ago. And during halftime, the cheer music quality is just terrible. Has anybody reported that?
Yes. I'll put it this.
Yeah, we, we, we've been having, it's a new sound system that's down there.
Brand new, that's, that's one point.
And we've been having some trouble with it. We've had the company back three or four times to do it. We're, we're hopeful that they got it, because last night, or last Friday, last week, we, it was a good, it was a much better night, but we definitely, we had some trouble.
Is there a reason why it's not perfect, for example? Like, we shouldn't settle, right?
No, 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 we've had them back several times.
They've come back every time we call them.
Yeah, we, we, we've been having, it's a new sound system that's down there.
That's, that's one point.
And we've been having some trouble with it. We've had the company back three or four times to do it. We're, we're hopeful that they got it because last night, or last Friday, last week, we, it was a good, it was a much better night. But we definitely, we had some trouble.
Is there a reason why it's not perfect, for example? Like, we shouldn't settle, right?
No, 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 we've had them back several times.
They've come back every time we've called them.
Is it, is it that somebody's using an iPhone or something? Is it, is it what they're hooking up to the system or the system?
Well, it's a little bit of both. I mean, the system itself was giving us trouble. So we, we were, we, we have been working with the company. It's under warranty. We've been working with them to come and fix it, to do that. But they also sometimes, at the last minute, try to play it through a boombox with a microphone, which doesn't sound good at all. So I think once the bass system is revol, revol... Once the bass system is corrected properly, they'll be able to hook in in a better way.
And have we given them, the cheer team who comes up with the music selection, have we given them a piece of equipment to connect? So it's not a random, like, device that has to connect to it?
I'd have to take a look and see, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Because, you know, like you said, it's probably a combination of both.
Yeah.
But it was terrible. I mean, you couldn't hear anything and...
No, it was fixed, this Friday. It was working Friday.
Perfect.
They came out that Monday morning, and there was a frequency of, it was creating feedback to the microphone. So they fixed it.
Beautiful, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else have anything? New business, old business?
We're going to School Board, some of us.
Yep.
We will miss you, Alan.
Yes, I had to back out, but I know you folks will come back with plenty of information and data for us.
Yep. Unless we have a cut.
Yes. I didn't want to miss that.
And that's first foray into the, into the, the joy of School Board.
That's it.
Oh, it can be fun.
There are the, the healthy items from some cafeterias, and everybody's got candy, so.
Right before Halloween.
Looking forward to it.
Yep.
Okay. We'll move into public comments on anything pertaining to Riverdale Regional School District. And since we have a lot of people masquerading as empty chairs, I don't think we have any public comments, unless anyone behind the cameras has anything to say. No?
They'll like get us out of here.
Student reps, anything to say? No? Okay, so let's just make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion?
Claudia, second?
I'll second.
Stephanie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
8:52.
Excellent.